Okay.
All right, let me attempt to screen share.
Give me one second, I haven't set your privileges yet. Okay, we are live. One minute. Okay Dana, you should be good to go, and we are live.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, welcome to Wednesday, August 12th, 2020 Planning Commission, can we get roll call please?
Ashley Leslie.
Sorry, I'm getting there.
Yeah.
And I apologize if I pronounce names wrong. Commissioner when?
President.
Commissioner Silva? Commissioner, Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Mika?
Present.
Commissioner Dodson?
Present.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Present.
And Chair Owens.
Present, very good. Okay, review of agenda items, if there's any items that have rose after the 72 hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda, a two to three majority vote is required, has anything come up since the posting?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments on your specific agenda item are heard under that item, for the public record, please state your name, do we have any members of the public that we wish to speak on something that is not on the agenda?
Chair, I received a letter addressed to the Planning Commission last week, signed JB Anonymous. I'll read the letter, Dear Planning Commission, I have been a seaside resident for years and a businesswoman here for almost as long. Not only have I enjoyed my residence here, but also my many years in business, now before I go on, I'm writing this as an anonymous anonymous letter. Because what I have to say is not against a fellow businessperson, but rather pro me and other businesspersons, many of us local businesspersons who have known one another for years and try to avoid problems. Many years ago at my business site, I had two driveway entrances slash exits, in an attempt to use my site better, I wanted to close the lesser used driveway. So I approached our planning commission with my above proposal, I was told no, the argument to leave both driveways open and unchanged was a matter of safety, allowing proper traffic flow, okay, who am I to argue with that, so I let it be. Today I was walking my dog on Fremont, so I was passing by the Turtle Bay Boiling Crab Restaurant at 1301 Fremont Boulevard. Where they enjoy the corner of Fremont and Trinity, I admire their frontage, I also noticed that they have an entrance exit on Fremont, but they closed the Trinity entrance exit with the restaurant patio enclosure build out. Now cars have to enter and exit on busy Fremont Boulevard, whereas before they could exit on the slower traffic Trinity exit. I had this, I had a very similar situation, is there a change in our planning commission's perspective on closing businesses? Entrances and exits due to different board members perspectives and our traffic changes, if so, maybe I can try to resubmit my original idea at my own business site. If you check this area out, and I see it left alone, then I will feel more comfortable coming before the planning commission. I don't want to be the bad guy per se saying, well, they did it, why can't I, if it appears okay, then I would assume. A submission, review, changes, and finally permits would allow me to take similar future steps, thank you, and signed again JB Anonymous. So if you want, I have a couple of code sections that I can review, if not, we can leave it at the comment.
Yeah, unless there's a member of the public that wants to speak on it right now, if we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, I think that would be the best.
You want it on the agenda just to receive a response from staff?
Well, what I would like to see is, I know Turtle Bay put in a beer garden there. And I didn't know if it was prior to COVID or 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 after. Because everybody, I guess if they're gonna serve beer outside, they have to have a fence around it, and that could be why they have blocked their driveway, I don't know, I know it never came in front of us.
Right, so um, the agenda for our next meeting and the public notice was already published, so we won't be able to do that, but I can provide you with kind of a two minute explanation right now.
Okay.
So 1734120 of the municipal code is the driveways and site access, and a second driveway and curb cut. Requires review from the Traffic Advisory Committee and then final approval by the City Council. And specific to the Turtle Bay project, it was a condition of approval by Public Works during the review of the outdoor dining area, and that project did receive Board of Architectural Review approval. So the removal of a driveway required at the time of construction. Is not permitted to be removed unless it's a condition associated with development on the site, so I don't know what specifics this individual has on their site, because they didn't leave an address or any form of contact. But to add a second driveway or removing one, it has to be with an associated development that the city would find during their review, whether that be Public Works or another department that the removal is necessary.
Very good. Yeah, I've been on for, I believe, over 10 years now, and I don't remember ever. Refusing to let somebody do something that, or even turning it over to. To Public Works to take a look at, so it must have been, she didn't give a date when we, when the planning commission turned her down, did she?
No.
Okay, yeah, so it's hard for us to 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 know what was going on or what the conditions were or why, but. Very good, anything else on that Beth?
No.
Okay, very good, we'll move to approval of minutes of July 22nd, 2020. Commissioners? Commissioner Dodson, do you wanna?
Don't believe there are any minutes in my packet.
Yeah, I didn't see any either.
Right, either was in mind.
That was going to be my comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and push that approval of minutes off to the next meeting, if we can make sure we get that in our packet, we'll we'll do that at that time. So we'll move on to business items, fence exception application number FE 20-02, David Woodman, applicant and property owners requesting a fence exception. Of two feet to allow for the construction of a six fall, six foot fence in the street side setback of 1809 Havana Street located at the RS single family dwelling, staff?
Hello Commissioners, my name is Dana Morrison, it's a pleasure to meet you, I will be presenting tonight's item. Give me a moment as I pull up the presentation. Alright, is my screen viewable?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, yes, okay, wonderful, so fence exception FE 2002, 1809 Havana Street. This is located on the eastern side of the city, just west of General Jim Moore Boulevard. The project site is approximately 5,800 square feet and is developed with an existing single, single story residence. 1809 Havana Street is a corner lot which is located at the intersection of Havana and San Pablo Avenue. Adjacent land uses consist of single family residential. This is the site plan for Havana, the yellow indicates the existing property lines. The blue represents the current fence locations, as you'll note, it is set back approximately two feet from the property line on the San Pablo Avenue side. And between two to three feet along the Havana Street side. The red portion is what's actually under review tonight, there is a fence exception being proposed for this 43 foot section of fence. Along the street side yard of San Pablo. The applicant is proposing to move the fence out to the property line, and then increase the height to six feet, the current fence ranges between. Four and a half to five feet in height as it exists. As well, the applicant is also proposing, though it is not part of this fence exception, to relocate and rebuild the front yard fence, which is indicated in the orange. This would also be located directly at the property line and would be consistent with code. Being four feet in height as required for the front yard as well as the vision triangle where this is located. So here are some existing site photos, the San Pablo frontage, this is the frontage where they're requesting the fence height exception, starting at that point where the fence cuts in to the house. And then back to the rear property line, and then the front yard fence will also be replaced, there's a picture below of the Havana frontage, it does have some visibility through. The front yard fence, but there is none of course in the rear. So historically. There was a hedge at the site, this is a photo from 2011, which shows the existing hedge which has been removed, the. Property owner purchased the property in 2015, there was originally a tree at that front corner as well, it has since been removed. It was not removed in accordance with our tree requirements for the city. But we have added a condition of approval which will require the applicant to submit a retroactive tree removal permit, and that will be processed through the Public Works Department.
Really quick, are we going to, are they gonna plant another tree where they took that one down?
So as part of the tree removal retroactive permit, they are required to to plant a replacement tree. The applicant, that will actually be reviewed by Public Works, the applicant has added a number of fruiting trees to the property, a pineapple guava, a fig, persimmon, two avocados, and two lemons. There's also the intention of planting a plum and a pomegranate tree, though it should be noted that these trees are not broadleafed, they don't provide as much of a canopy as the existing tree does. The point of the urban trees is to provide a canopy, so it'll be assessed by the Public Works Department whether or not those trees that have been planted. Will sufficiently replace the canopy that has been lost with the removal of this tree.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the reason for this request specifically. The current, the biggest issue is privacy, the current bedroom is viewable from, from San Pablo. The two photos on the outside of the privacy section shows what it looks like from the actual sidewalk when you step up, which is the little middle photo where you can see. One of the property owners inside is pretty much right at the fence, but you can clearly see into. The master bedroom there, there is also safe, safety and health concerns. San Pablo is a high traffic area for pedestrians and vehicle, and the increased height would create an improved buffer. There's also safety concerns due to neighborhood vandalism and neighborhood dogs, both dog and human feces have been left in that offset between the property line and the existing fence. Which is why the applicant is hoping to relocate the fence to the property line to prevent this from happening. Originally, this wasn't an issue with the hedge that had been located, but the hedge itself was. Too high per our code as well, and would have need to be at least trimmed. The fence is also in an existing state of disrepair, and the applicant does have two dogs. There are actual cut marks that you can see in the attached photos that show other dogs attempting to get into the fence, so having this repaired to properly. Separate the owner's dogs from pedestrians' dogs is very important as well. So some photos of the existing fence, the street side and the front, we are predominantly focusing on the street side, because that is the only section that is requesting an exception. The applicant is willing to have some design input on the front yard, but. The street side is the one where we are actually asking for something beyond code. So the existing fence ranges in height from 52 inches to 65 inches and is consistent of a 12 inch wide wood pickets with no spacing in between. The applicant has come forward with a number of fence design options, this is. Preferred option, it's a six foot tall red foot fence with 5.5 inch wide flat tops pickets with no spacing. So this would be along that 43 foot portion of the street side yard on San Pablo. This is their second design option. Six foot tall redwood fence consisting of a 5.5 wide dog eared picket fence with no spacing. Option three, a six foot tall redwood fence consisting of a 5.5 inch wide dog eared. Pickets with no picket spacing, we have a vertical and horizontal element to kind of add some visual character as opposed to a straight line. This is a little less cost effective than the previous two options, but it does provide the privacy. That the applicant is looking for. Final option, which the applicants worked with staff on is a six foot tall fence with 5.5 inch dog eared vertical pickets with no picket spacing. And then. On top of that lattice, my apologies for the error in the option four, so lattice for that final foot on top. This is least design desired option, it does provide privacy. However, it's a little bit more cost costly than the other design options. The style of the fence is consistent with one other fence in the surrounding neighborhood. Give me as I go backwards, I'd like to tell which fences are consistent with other types. Option three fence, this is a unique fence style which is not found anywhere else in the neighborhood. Option two. Is consistent with. It's consistent with six other fences in the surrounding neighborhood in terms of design, not in height. And option one is consistent with three other fences. In the surrounding neighborhood, though I should note that those are located on top of the existing retaining walls, not standalone. Per the municipal code, we are required to find that there is a physical hardship. To consider this fence exception. Due to the existing topography of the lot, the house sits between two to three in feet lower than the grade at sidewalk, this allows for clear views into the master bedroom. By increasing the height of the rear 43 feet of fence along the street side property line, it will provide privacy to the master bedroom and additional privacy to the backyard. This here is a map of San Pablo Avenue, pretty much from Jim, General Jim Moore to Moscow Street. So these are all houses which front onto San Pablo, these are 35 houses total. However, only 12 of these have side yards. Which front, or which abut San Pablo, the remaining houses are all frontages onto San Pablo itself. Of those eight, of those, each of those 12 houses have residences which are located at a grade much higher than that of the street and sidewalk, if you look at the. The houses on the bottom of the screen with the yellow dots, those are houses which are above the grade of the sidewalk. Only Havana location, which are the ones on the north side of San Pablo, the four dots. Indicate houses which have a grade that are lower than the sidewalk, so those four houses are unique in their. In their ability for pedestrians and vehicles to see into their rear and side yards. These are some photos showing. Showing those higher grades for houses, and then the bottom right photo shows the houses which have grades that are lower than the sidewalk. There was a general survey done of neighborhood fences. Of the 35 homes along San Pablo Avenue, homes with nonconforming fence material, there were five. Homes with nonconforming fence height, there were five as well. And then homes with both nonconforming fence and, or homes with conforming fence height and materials, there were 12 of these, and then homes without fences 13. That comes to a breakdown of just around 15% of homes with nonconforming fence materials, 15% with nonconforming height. 34% of homes have conforming fences and 37% have no fences. The majority of fences with, homes with fences have the site. Directly on the property line, so every single fence on San Pablo, if they have a fence, is located directly on the property line. We did a survey of these, how, those 12 houses which have side yards only, which about San Pablo. Of those. Fences which are at the property line and have a nonconforming height or material, 33% of those. Homes with a conforming height and material, with the fence at the property line, that is 16%. Homes with the fence setback 15 feet, 25%, homes with no fence 25, in essential, 50% of the homes located. Along San Pablo have their fences located at the property line. Along with general hardship. The following findings need to be made to consider a fence exception. General safety hazard and general public would not be created. The proposed fence exception would not result in a general safety hazard. The proposed six foot fence for the street side yard provides additional screening to the master bedroom and is not substantially taller than the existing nonconforming fence. Proposed fence would not create a safety hazard to the general public. Secondly, we need to show a traffic related safety hazard would not be created, the proposed street side fence does not pose a traffic related safety hazard due to its location at the rear of the property. Furthermore, the proposed fence is located 15 feet from the adjacent driveway located 1881 San Pablo and will not obstruct vision. The proposed replacement fence for the front yard will be consistent with seaside municipal code and will not obstruct the site distance at the intersection of Havana and San Pablo. Thirdly, we need to find the fence will not impair visibility at the intersection or traffic safety visibility, as noted earlier, it will be consistent with the height requirements for traffic visibility. Being only four feet in height for the first 30 feet of the street side yard. Four, the commission needs to find the fence or wall will not obstruct vision from an adjoining driveway, the proposed fence is located 15 feet from the driveway, which is located on the neighboring property. 1881 San Pablo. Finally, we need to find that the fence is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The defense design overall will be an improvement to a neighborhood which contains a wide variety of fence types, from solid with no transparency to nonconforming height, nonconforming materials, to no fence at all. As discussed earlier, the subject property is one of only four residences along this portion of San Pablo which have a residence which is sight sighted below the grade of the sidewalk. The proposal offers to install a conforming fence in the front yard and along the initial 30 feet of the street side yard frontage, with only a height exception being requested for the remaining 43 feet. Of the side yard, the redwood material proposed can be found in other fences. In the neighborhood. It should be noted that while the applicant is requesting an exception, overall, the project will effectively remove a 100% nonconforming fence, front and street side. And replace them with a fence that will be predominantly conforming barring the requested exception for an additional two feet of height. Along the 43 foot portion of the street side yard. Based on this analysis, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the proposed fence. And pick a design option, these are some. Options that we have come forward with and discussed with the applicant. If the commission would like to propose other types, they can, but we would propose one of these four options here. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Commissioners, anything for staff?
I don't have a question, but I do want to compliment the staff on very thorough research you did on this issue, very helpful.
Okay. I do have a request, if that's okay.
Sure.
Dana, could you go back to the slide with the four houses that have side yards? Or the four dots, I guess. Yeah, didn't you have pictures of those four houses on one slide?
So it's not all the four houses, if this slide shows. The the top two, and then the bottom left are houses which have the houses above the sidewalk grade. And then the bottom right corner photo shows kind of a view down San Pablo, which shows those houses which are are below grade. The green house right behind the pickup truck, that is the house in question. And then the blue house right next to that pickup truck is also another house which has. A frontage or not, or a butts their side yard onto San Pablo, but then the red house is one which actually has a. A regular frontage onto San Pablo, so it is only showing two of those four houses in that photo.
When you're saying two of the four, you talking below grade?
Yes. The if the attachment.
I apologize, I got lost, it looks like only one of them is below grade of the the four pictures here.
Yes, yes, that is correct, so the the other three photos are photos showing houses that are above above grade, so I didn't specifically call out those four photos, those are located in the attachments. My apologies for for confusing you, I should have split it into two separate slides.
Cause in the, in our packet, there's on page 28, there's a picture of, I think, one of the homes. But I'm not certain that it's technically below grade of the sidewalks, I'm just curious what the four. Well, I guess the other three then, homes, cause ours is one of the four, correct, one that's under discussion? But I'm curious, the other three, the one across the street. I can see on Google Maps. And that has nothing, right, no, no fence at all.
Correct.
But all that people are looking in there is the garage window, which probably has a window curtain. So I'm just curious what the other two homes have done with the same scenario, do you happen to know off the top of your head?
Yes, so the, the one on the very eastern. Side, the yellow dot on the very eastern side, so that the first right top dot, that fence actually. Yes, Juarez Street, that one has. A fence designed very similar to option four, so it's a approximately five and a half foot fence with. The majority of the bottom being solid portion and then a top small portion of lattice.
And does that house, is that also have a side yard facing San Pablo rather than?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And then the one down Stowe?
The one down on Stowe, so that one is an extremely low lot, so they have probably a five foot drop down to their actual grade at their house from the sidewalk, so they have a retaining wall. And then about a two foot fence from the sidewalk, but if you measure it from inside their house, it would be probably a six foot fence.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and they also have existing hedge there which blocks a good chunk of their rear yard as well.
Anything else Commissioners for staff? Seeing no one, we will open it up to the applicant.
Dana, will you unshare your screen for me please, so I can?
Yes.
Thank you. Would the applicants like to speak at this time?
Did everybody?
Go ahead and unmute yourself, it's Dana, David and Ena.
Did everybody else lose the everybody or, and see just zoom on their screen?
No, I can see everyone.
I can see everyone.
I can too.
All sudden mine just went to post attendees zoom.
Do you see the zoom icon down below, just click on that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not coming up anymore.
Cause we still, we still see you.
Okay, I see none of you, I don't know what happened, what what went on, but it just clicked me completely out of pictures.
I still see the whole commission, this is David, by the way.
Okay, David, you wanna go ahead and present to the to the commission what you wanna say?
Yeah. Mike, okay, you guys hear me, okay?
Yeah, I hear you fine.
Wonderful, unfortunately, my wife can't make it, something came up, but. I think I'm gonna be covering everything we need to say, and there's gonna be a couple. And there's going to be a couple of points I'm probably going to jump to after I read what I wrote. I took some notes during the presentation, a couple of points I'd like to bring up, if that's okay. And I have a five-minute window, correct?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, my name is David Woodman. Myself and my wife Ina Rosa are the homeowners and the ones that submitted the request. It took an immense amount of work to be able to purchase our home in twenty fifteen, but it would not be ready to live in for another five months. We spent every dime we had, as well as maxed every credit line to start our life together and what we plan to be our forever home. Since then, it has not always been an easy ride for us, and that's why we are here five years later with just enough money to start the fence. My wife has been quietly putting aside a little money at a time for who knows how long, surprising for our birthday and our five-year wedding anniversary, which just passed at the end of July. We would love to have started by now, but we were making sure to do things the right way and follow proper procedures, so here we are. The fence has to come first because it frames the property and will determine how we tackle the rest. Hopefully, not in five more years. We're deeply excited to move forward and finish our property the way we have talked about for years. I have a couple of closing statements, but first I want to address some of the items that were brought up. So the tree was brought up. That was a horrible miscommunication with a gardener we no longer employ. Happy to pay the permit fee if that's what the commission requires. We've planted seven trees, as was brought up by Dana. I'd like to point out that the two avocado trees and the pomegranate tree and the plum tree will have canopies larger than the existing tree that was on the property when they mature. And if you'd like to see an example, I actually sprouted those avocado trees from a mature avocado tree in the neighbor's yard. So you can see the canopy right now, if you'd like, Google map photo or whatever. So you'll get an idea of how big those two canopies will be. And I have one avocado tree in the front yard and one in the backyard. There was a couple of fences not pictured that actually are close to what I'd like in the side yard. So on the corner of Nadina Street, one block up, there's a home that has a side yard with a six-plus-foot fence for privacy into their yard. So that was actually a fantastic example. And then down on Still Court, I initially wasn't going to bring that up. But there's a home there with a six-foot tall fence in the front yard for privacy because it's facing the street. I didn't want to bring it up because it was farther down from my property and I felt like it wasn't as relevant. But since it became part of the conversation, I want to point that out. I mean, I canvassed probably a six-block radius around my property to see what the neighborhood was like. And my exceptions really minor compared to what exists in the neighborhood. So the last couple of things I wanted to say. I'm here because I'm asking you guys to look beyond the fence and consider the humans and dogs living behind it. To everyone outside, it's just a fence. That's going to make the neighborhood a little bit nicer. To us, is another step towards building our life and making a better space for our little family. I respect the commission's job in our city and the need to apply building guidelines in a meaningful manner. My job is to build a wonderful life with those I love most.
Thank you.
That's it.
How how come you took the hedge down? Just curious.
It was huge and unmanageable. It was actually blocking the sidewalk.
Yeah, I know. I I live in the area and I walk this all the time.
Okay.
I noticed all of a sudden, everything was gone. That's when obviously people could look right in. Now, do you plan to put the fence back where it is now, or are you going to push it clear up against the sidewalk?
I'd like to have it on the property line.
Okay. See, the one thing with that is you you talk about dogs hitting the fence. I I wish we could see the fence back a little bit with some something maybe planted in front of it like it was prior. But I I can see your dilemma with the way that the the topography is in that area. But commissioners, anything for the applicant? I can't see you guys, so I I have no idea what's going on.
I have nothing. Nothing for me.
Okay, well, we'll bring it. Thank you very much to the applicant. We'll open it up to public comment. And can you see if you can get me my screen back?
I've been I've been looking to see why your screen has disappeared.
Yeah, as soon as you click them on, it clicked me right out. I don't know if the why, but it did. Maybe what I'll do is I could sign off and then come back on.
Okay. Let's see, is that, did your screen come back?
No.
Um, no, okay. Okay, and we do have one, we have, should I wait for you or do you want me to read it?
Yeah, let me click off and re-sign in and see if I gain my cameras back again. I'll be right back.
Apologies, guys, give us a couple of minutes.
It's opening right now. I got it, got it back.
Fantastic. So can I, I'm going to just read in the four public comments. Got it, it disappeared again, guys. There it goes. It's connecting. You're on mute, but you're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Okay, let's get the public comment.
So we have four items to read into the record for public comment that you received in your packets. One from Julian Keogh, one from David Woodman, Hannah Gammons and Eric Erickson. And so those comments obviously will be read into the record. And then there is one in the audience tonight, one one comment from the audience. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and you have two minutes for public comment.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Well, first, thank you for your time. This is actually my second planning commission ever. My name is Franco Bocchico. Lifelong, not lifelong, season rested up until college, went to college, joined the army, a bunch of stuff came back, moved back to the area recently. So I'm, I live in the neighborhood next to Dave. I'm about three blocks away. And I really just want to implore the the commission, if possible, to really consider what he's asking for. When Dave bought the house in twenty fifteen, it was a latentated, it was important to disrepair. That hedge you guys are concerned about was destroying the fence as it was. And honestly, the fence itself is a eyesore. Now, Dave is an avid supporter of seaside community, puts a lot of effort in. His wife is a social worker. They really do their best for seaside. And this process alone, the fence is going to cost around three thousand dollars. To get to this point with you guys costs him fifteen hundred dollars. That's half the cost of the fence. And for two people that are young and struggling, that cost is significant and hard. But he wanted to do it the right way, unlike other neighbors that just built fences. And I feel responsible because I think Jesse did it the right way, so I feel even more guilty for putting him through this. I know this is not an easy process for him. I just, he's asking because it would make him feel safer. It would make his life feel safer. I don't know if you guys are an expert in your front yard. I have. It's not fun to clean up when the team next to me. I really hope you guys consider the person. I hope you consider everything he's done for the community. I also hope you consider that he's doing his best to beautify his neighborhood and they can more visually attract. That house before he got there did not look great, and he's done everything he can to improve it. So please, please, please. My heart implores you, and I'm so upset right now, I'm not going to say anything. I want to say, please consider what he's asking for. He really wants to help the city. He wants to make it look better. And please consider what he's asking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Ashley, next.
There's anyone else open? The floor is open? Okay, seeing no one.
Okay, public comment is open. Public comment is still open. Seeing nobody step forward, we'll close public comment and bring it back, commissioners.
I do have one, I do have one question. Ashley, you said there was three emails that were in our packet?
Four. I received four, four emails and one, one letter that was attached to an email.
Yeah, I didn't get any of the of the emails. I did get the attachment that had the the PDF on it for for one of them.
Okay. Um, so I I was, I apologize. I was told that you received, you guys received all four letters or emails. I want to make sure I'm very clear about that. There were four emails. One email had a letter attached. And they are all supporting the the new fence.
Ashley.
Yes.
Given that it seems like not all the commissioners received all of the public comment. I think we should read those into the record and if they have received the attached letter PDF, that might not be necessary to read. If they've done that on their own.
Absolutely. Is that the will of the commission?
Yeah, the the only one that we got, just so that you guys know, is from Emma Keog and Julian Mary, I believe.
Chair, did you scroll down? Because that that's in the same.
I do see them now. I see the one PDF. But then below, you've got support from Julian Mary and Emma Keog. Then you've got David Woodman. And then you have John Erickson. I believe we have them all. They're at the bottom of the of the public comments for tonight. So I don't think we need to read them.
Can we confirm that with the commissioners, please?
Yes, I have received.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Beth, we've we've all got them. So we don't need to read them into public comment.
Right.
So with that said, any, did that answer your question, Commissioner La Micah?
Yes, I didn't see the second email, so I just read them, so no issues there. Thanks.
Okay, since we've got you on the line, let's go ahead and hear your comments.
I'm for this. I personally like fence number two. That's just me. But I'm in favor of this fence being put up.
Very good. Commissioner Evans?
I personally, I pulled up the the Google Maps and looked straight down the street up in east and west. And they're just, this is going to really stick out. It's going to be very different than everything looking down towards the ocean or looking back up towards Salinas. That said, it's no doubt that something needs to be done with the current fence. And pushing it out to the sidewalk, going up an extra two feet, I don't think it's going to change that much on the overall look. So it's kind of a hesitant support, but I think at the end of the day, I think the safety concerns and the privacy concerns outweigh just the fact that it's going to look, it's going to definitely stick out when you drive down that street.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Hun?
I support this this project, so the only thing is, my concern is option one and two looks like kind of plain for, you know, just for the outside of the San Pablo. I need a more like more character characteristic into it. Maybe option four, four or three. You know, something more cra- and more, you know, artistic. Instead of playing like one and two, which look like your backyard or your side neighbor fence, you know. I want something more, you know, more, what do you call it? Bring bring out some some character. So I'm I'm, I both support this project, but I think option three or four would be pretty nice for me.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dodson?
Yeah, I I totally support this. The five criteria, I think, have been met. In terms of the type of fence, I'm very cognizant, having put a fence in recently myself about cost or that were there. I see number two everywhere around town. It's a very common design. It's a little nicer than the first option, probably cost about the same. So if we're going to prescribe a fence type, that would be the one I would prefer.
Thank you. Vice Chair Spalletta?
Yeah, first of all, kudos to the applicant for taking the proper steps to move forward on this. Thank you for that. I'm for this. I I understand I I have a retaining wall that also has a little bit of the exposed property. And it does collect trash and other things. And I do understand why they're pushing it, they want to push it to the property line. And I'm just under the assumption, like my fellow commissioners are thinking, that perhaps this is just the first step. And they're going to blend in with the neighborhood and maybe do something in addition to, I don't know, maybe a paint job or or something. I can't imagine they're going to leave the the fence as it is there. It seems like they're very pro of blending in with the the neighborhood there. So I I'm for this.
Very good. Okay, I am also for this. And I agree with Commissioner Hun that I would like to see number three. It has more architectural design to it. I know that when we, when we look at this commissioners, we cannot look at it in monetary. We have to look at it. We are also part of the BAR now. So we need to look at it from an aspect of looking nice going down the road. And so I agree with Hun. I I really like number three. I like the uprights and then the verticals, uprights and verticals. It just gives it a different off look, especially when it's forty-three feet long. It it just gives a little more aesthetic to the to the surrounding area.
But with. Can I ask you a question about that? They're proposing the step method in our packet, page twenty-five. Will that option three look as good with the step method or would the parallel method go better? Didn't mean to interrupt, but I just thought it was important to ask that question.
No, absolutely. I I agree with you. What is? Ashley, can we bring back the applicant to see what, what is the slope on his property? Is it, is it pretty level running along the street side where he's sitting down? If you could unmute him, we could, we could hear if, how, how level this lot is.
Can you hear, can you guys hear me all right?
Yeah, we got you and you didn't cut me out this time.
All right. There's a pretty good grade. I wouldn't be able to give you a meaningful answer other than I'm on a pretty good slope. I don't know the, I mean, if you want, I could enter the Zoom meeting on my phone and walk outside if that helps.
No, that's, that's quite all right. Unless Commissioner Evans wants that. It's it's his trick.
Well, in our packet on page eighteen, there's a pretty decent shot. It's not exactly, the shots are exactly parallel, but I'm guessing it's about a fifteen, maybe twenty percent grade. That's a pretty good slope.
Yeah, no, it definitely is. See, it's I'm bringing up the fence now on my other computer so that I can take a peek at both of them.
Dana, would you like to clarify the height difference at the corner versus as you progress towards the bedroom window? I'm calling on Dana Morrison.
Sorry, my button wasn't working. Yes, so the 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 height of the fence varies actually because the the sand grade isn't quite level. But when you, when you're right at the fence by by the window, you're at about sixty-five inches. As you head towards the rear portion, it drops down to fifty-two inches.
And Dana, also clarify the grade difference when you're on the sidewalk at the corner as opposed to when you're on the sidewalk near the bedroom window.
I don't think that, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
I thought that was what you were asking for clarification on was the trade of this.
If you look at page eighteen in the packet, the street photo view, you can see there's, there's quite a bit of, it looks like he's got a one or a two-by-twelve underneath the bottom of the fence at the very bottom. And then each one looks like it has a little bit less, a little bit, it's, but there there definitely is a decent amount of slope running down San Pablo alongside of his house.
Yeah, the applicant did state that he was acceptable doing either a stepped or just going with the grade. Both options were designs he would be willing to to go with.
Right, well, the step will keep it all at six foot, right?
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Evans?
I was, it was more a question for us as a commission to determine when we decide on options. I just wanted to raise the issue of number three, whether it would aesthetically look right if it was stepped versus parallel. Which might make a difference on of the four options, which one we looked at. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but it just seemed like it made a difference.
To me, I I don't know. As a builder, no, because all's your To me, I I don't know, as a builder, no, because all you're doing is you're still continuing the same height at the top. And so therefore, when you build them, uh, if we're going to be stepping them anyways, the, the the every other one would just be whatever the step is going to be to keep the six foot at the lower level, I believe. Correct?
Well, if you look on uh, page twenty five of the, of the um, packet.
Yes.
Um, the step method is gonna, gonna step down, obviously, whereas the, the parallel one, I think the both at times, the step method may not be exactly six foot. It might be up or down, whereas the parallel method would always be six foot, right?
Correct.
And if it's parallel, I think it works, this is just my aesthetic view. Option three works better on the parallel than it does the step, but that's just my thought.
Right. Very good. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, do we have a motion?
With regards to the motion, do we have any consensus if we are going to be uh, asking for what certain type of thing?
Um, it, that would be your motion to make. If you want to go with uh, letting him choose the fence, to me, it's not that big a deal. Okay, they're both going to be the same heights anyways.
I'll throw it out and you guys can not decide if that's not the fence. But I wa- I'm moved to approve uh, the dispensing exception twenty two uh, with vision that uh, the fence, I will, I will say, I I find that's too fine, probably in the minority there to me. It's not a bad look, so I would be happy with that.
Very good. Do we have a second?
My second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing no opposed, so passed. Okay, a some, a appeal be be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of this meeting. It shall state the pertinent facts and be required by the required filing fees. Being as you got your fence, I don't think you'll be doing that, but I still have to say it. Thank you, guys. Okay, next is give me one second to scroll back down further. Um, Dana, can you, can you give me, why is the application for the tree trimmel in, in our application? Or in our packet?
Have it there for a reference as an attachment.
Okay.
For some reason, you guys decided not, not to make him do that, but it is quite clear that trees need to be removed using a tree removal permit.
Correct. Yeah, that's one thing that I'm pretty sta- I I hate seeing any trees come out of seaside. We have so few of them that, to me, we need to protect them, not take them down. Um, I just hope that uh, he gets a nice green tree like what was in there. Cause unfortunately, most of your fruit trees look bare a lot of part of the year. And so, anyway, we've already passed it, so it doesn't matter. I'm not getting the end of this. Hold on here. I think it comes down to uh, stuff from commissioners.
Yeah, the next item is reports from commissioners.
Chair, get clear back up above this. Anyway, let's go ahead and anything, any reports from commissioners?
None for me.
None? Okay. Seeing that, uh, reports from staff?
None.
Okay, with that, do we have an emotion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Pose, seeing none. Thank you, guys. Good meeting. You guys too? Hello? Who's that?
Just me. Good night. Nice to meet you all.
Oh, you too, Dana. Very good to meet you. Good job on your presentation. Okay, okay, guys, well, I'll uh, I'll give Leslie a call later for signing documents. But uh, other than that, I guess we can adjourn this meeting.
Have a good one.
Thank you, guys.